Get out of here, stalker.
Alright guys, and we are back. Sorry about the technical difficulties we were having. I don't know why, but Twitch just said, "No, you're done." All I did was restart the stream, that's it. That's all I had to do, like, so I have no idea. Twitch, stop doing whatever you're doing. Alright, so getting back on-
It was happening to other channels too, so it was Twitch.
Damn it, Twitch. Fix your shit. Alright, Russ, we got another question for you, moving on here. Coffee Nail asks, "Status of Mask." Obviously, the Fire Moth executional impossible, what about the Kodiak? But basically Mask, and this has been a topic that, you know, you guys have had technical difficulties, I guess, in the past with?
Did you just ask me a question? Cause-
Yes, alright. Question was from Coffee Nail, "The status of Mask," basically.
Do we need to repeat the last question? I know that a couple of us said that. It's on recording, what, they just catch up in the recording then, or?
Yeah.
Okay. Mask. Boy, that's a great one. It scares the living shit out of us. And it's based on just network capabilities of the engine. We feel like we're pushing it to the limits. Hit detection and everything, the latest HSR and SRM fixes and everything, we're in a pretty darn good spot, but, you know, it took a lot of exceptional engineering to get that working and to working as well as it is. We have mechs now, that significant number of our light mechs that move along with speed tweak at 150 kilometers an hour plus. Some mechs with Mask are gonna be, what, approaching 200 kilometers an hour or more. We're really worried that we're going to see rubber banding effects that, you know, we can't control. So I think in the end, unfortunately, we made the, I think, the smart decision of not trying to tackle that issue still at this moment. As you know, we're not perfect right now in our networking side as it is. We've got work to do on the desync issue. That's a tough one. It's like, we can play here and I get people reporting they played, you know, six hours one night and it was perfect for them. They didn't see anyone desync and then I get reports that they just like desyncing like crazy, so. We still have work to do on that side on our networking side. We're not satisfied to the point where we say, "Yeah, it is great, it's solid, let's take on Mask and let's, let's try to see how our, you know, game reacts when a mech going 200 kilometers an hour runs into a, you know, PPC bolt." So I'm sorry, right now it's a technical issue. It's just not something we're willing to take on at this moment. That could deflect us from our task at hand of finishing off Community Warfare. So when we made our mech choices, we were not looking at Mask ones. So you can start looking at, paring down the list, I know. I can give you one example, I believe it was the Shadow Cat. Sorry, it's not in the Clan package. It was actually my choice for the medium, but the Mask scared me off and hopefully I'm not talking out of my ass here. I think I got the names right and the situation right here, but uh, don't worry, the one we did end up with the for a medium mech is really awesome and everyone thought it was really great and I think NGNG agreed with me on that one. But anyhow, there's a quick rundown on Mask and why, you know, you haven't seen those mechs yet. The other aspect of the question, I think, was Hunchback 2C, Geno 2C. That's separate, those are later waves, as you know, so we're, we're trying to focus on the timeline. We did the rollback, we're trying to stay to it. And that is focusing on mechs that are, you know, part of these initial waves of, you know, Community Warfare. So not yet. No Hunchback 2Cs and Geno 2Cs and, you know, Kodiaks and things just yet. So that's, we need to, this Clan wave's gonna get out and we get past that, get into the new year, then, we look at what makes sense then, you know, where we are on the timeline and go from there.
You were correct about the Shadow Cat being the medium with Mask. Now, would you ever consider releasing mechs that have Mask, just without Mask, like the Flea and the Shadow Cat?
Yeah, I would. I would. I get a little bit of pushback from the team on that, various people thinking that we'd get, you know, a little too much heat from the community for not having the Mask present. And they might be right, it's hard to say. So that's always one of those debates we have, what's better or worse, is it better to have it but just not have Mask function or is that gonna create too much, like, what the hell, where's Mask? So for now, we steer to clear. And, you know, yeah, I, let's leave it at that, I guess. I don't, not try to pick a fight or anything, but sometimes we can not get the benefit of the doubt of the patience from our community in situations like that. So, you know, we choose ones that don't have Mask for now.
Cool, Phil, you wanna take one, next one?
Yep, so question is from ZWaz, I don't, yeah, says, "With the current weekend event, we've seen 12-man player company level getting groups stomping all over the four-player lance level groups. Is there any hope for altered matchmaking to stop the poke stomping?" Which, they're not really pugs if they're, yeah, it's not like they're playing solo players, so. But yeah, is there any thing, you know, set for that?
Well, first off, I guess, it's difficult to accomplish everything, you know, we, I wanna expand this answer for a little while because I think there's an important point to make and an important kind of almost request or question of the community in it here. We, as you know, we got a lot of requests for groups of any size. And we put that into the game. And it's not an easy thing to accomplish with the group queue and the matchmaker essentially having to deal with all sorts of sizes of groups. And as you can imagine, you have a group of nine, there's only one group size that works with that, it's a group of three. You know, the matchmaker has to find a group of three to match with. So I think I'm gonna approach this question a little differently, cause the quicker answer is like, look, there's just limitations in how the matchmaker can match people up against other people, if you wanna have groups of all sizes, right? Other games had maximum group sizes of three out of 15. But our community was very vocal, they wanted groups of any size. We've given that to you guys and I think we need to now focus on the fact that that's present, we gave you guys that feature, and now we've got, there's gotta be some trade-offs. So the trade-offs are that, you know, situations like that are gonna happen. Right now, our philosophy is that we're not making people wait overly long. Somebody might say, "Oh really? I feel like I'm waiting a long time." Well, there's limits. We set caps on those, right? Three, four, five minutes, there's various breaking points and caps that we've set in there. And when we hit those breaking points, we have to initiate some type of release valve to kick off a match. And so oftentimes, that creates a situation where you have a 12-man and they don't go up against another 12-man. They go up against three groups of four. But I wanna talk to you guys, what I feel like is a better way of looking at the problem, and it's something that I've been meaning to bring up with you guys for over a month. I've been looking for the right moment, but there's always been more pressing tasks, it felt like. And, cause you know, there's a lot of comments out there about elo is broken. And I think most of them are actually misinformed statements and they're based on subjects like you just mentioned. They're in a situation where they're in a group of 12 and all of a sudden they match up against, you know, three groups of four, or they're in a situation where, you know, a group of four, or let's say a group of 12 is put together that's of an average elo score of like 1800, so you know, fairly good, you know, above-average group, ends up being matched up against, you know, six groups of two with an average elo score of 1200. That's not a very fair match, it's not what the matchmaker's ideal goal is. And the end result is for people to say, "Hey, the match elo's broken. Elo sucks, elo's not working." Well, let me put, give you a new perspective on that and then I wanna actually propose something. I've seen the matchmaker work, I watch it in real time with our matchmaker command center. It's an amazing tool and it tells us everything. And it shows us, and in fact, I'm gonna bring it up here while I'm talking. So, let me just refresh this here. Right now, it tells me the average elo difference of our teams in the solo queue and in the group queue. And the group queue right now is running another 60 on average, a difference of 60, 60 more difference in the elo scores than the solo queue. But I can also look at the dispatched games and I can see, like, here's a game in the solo queue. It looks, this game in particular is a perfect 3-3-3-3. One side has, they both have four Clan mechs. One though has one heavy, the other has two heavies and the other has an extra medium, they both have one light, and the Clan mechs. And the elo score in this game is separated by just, looks like just 42. So that's a very good match that the matchmaker was able to put together, and that's in a solo queue. And as you guys all know, our solo queue is quite competitive, there's not near the complaints that there is in the group queue. And you will see much more frequently, you'll see matches that are separated by even, you know, several hundred elo scores. But let me describe a scenario to you that I think is something we should consider for a change. Here we have a modest, you know, or moderate-sized game in MechWarrior Online. And let's define that for a second. Basically, when it comes to these online free-to-play games, you have the monsters like League of Legends, Dota 2, World of Tanks. And then you have the ones just under that. And, you know, I'm proud to say that basically MechWarrior Online fits in with those group of games that's just under that. Now, just, I mean, admittedly, that step down from those monsters is a huge step. I mean, it's enormous. I mean, those games are absolutely enormous. And just under that though, there's games like MechWarrior Online and a few others that are still very viable product and that's still something very significant, that's something to be very proud of. There's most of the other games, there's lots of others, even other ones that are made by much bigger companies with much bigger budgets that people are very excited about. Have come out and they've already, they've come out since MechWarrior's come out and they're already disappeared or essentially shut down or whatnot. One in particular, everyone thought was a big competitor to us, not so much anymore. So it's a lot there to be happy about, but still, we do have a limited level of players. We're not huge, huge product with infinite numbers of players in the queue. But I think we probably have more hardline options in our matchmaker than almost any other game, including those games that are infinitely huger. I think we got a little too carried away with giving our players, our goal is to satisfy our players and try to give as many hardline options as possible. And I always have players asking like, "Well, can we get an option for this and that?" And meaning, can we restrict the matchmaker in more and more ways? The truth is, we've already gone a little bit too far. And let me describe that example now. Let's say there's a team of 12. And they have an average elo of 17. And the matchmaker, this is a really simple example, the matchmaker very quickly says, "Oh, look at this, here's another group of 12." Oh, their elo was 1680, that's a separation of 20. This is an awesome match. I should put them together, that's the best match. Then what happens is says, "Uh oh, sorry, I can't. That other group of 12 said they would not play Conquest." And the first group of 12 said they were Conquest only. So now the matchmaker discards that perfect matchup for you and then goes back to the pool. And eventually, it might end up with three groups of four at an average elo of 1200, you know, hundreds and hundreds less than the other one, because the time limit was reached and it kicks off that match. And the end result is that players say, "Hey, elo's broken." And it doesn't matter if it was battle value or anything, in that particular case, it was the hard restrictions on the matchmaker that broke the situation. Now, my, and this isn't a perfect solution, it's not gonna make it perfect, because you still have some limitations on the matchmaker and the way we make the games. But one thing I think we should consider right away is we should consider changing the game mode selector in our game from a hardline option to a vote system. So we tell the matchmaker, "Hey, I want it..." So on that earlier example, that group says, you know, instead of saying, "We're not gonna play Conquest," they're saying, "We vote for Assault and Skirmish." And they didn't put a vote in for Conquest. And that's what, you know, each of the players did or the group leader or whatnot. So what happens, and it's, when the match kicks off, it just does a tally of the votes. So yes, there could be situations where you did not check the box for Conquest, but you ended up playing Conquest, cause the matchmaker says, "Look, this is the most fair match. I found a perfect match for you, but in order to utilize this perfect match, you need to play Conquest." I think most of our players, and I'm happy to get Nico to take a poll on this, in understanding this would suggest, yes, I'm willing to accept playing a game mode that isn't my first choice, if it means the best and most competitive match for me and all the other players around me. So that's something we could do really quickly. Meaning, Carl, who works at Matchmaker, could, we could leave the existing UI as it is, I believe, and essentially, you just click the boxes and they become votes rather than hardline choices. And here's something that Carl suggested and some of the other guys did, and I think it's a good, I think it's a good suggestion. If the players are willing to accept that change in the game mode selections for the betterment of the matches and the betterment of the elo and matchmaker system, we would also be willing to give you guys an extension of the voting system and let you vote on the map. So what that means is, this would come a little bit later, wouldn't come as quickly as the voting on game mode thing, cause we would have to create an extension of one of the UI screens and basically put checkboxes next to all the maps in the game, and the players would then be able to check the ones they vote for. So again, doesn't mean if you did not put a vote in for TerraTherma that you would never play TerraTherma. If the votes, you know, counted up, that, you know, it was still a viable option in the random selection of a map, then it's still possible to get it, but, you know, jokes aside, I suppose, there might not be very many votes for that map, so you might not ever have it come up on the vote list. So, but that would be a bit of a trade-off. It still means all the maps are possible, but certainly you have the ability as a player to say, "Okay, I don't really care for this map, this map, or this map, I'm not gonna vote for them," and you'd lower your chance of actually getting those maps. So that's something that I think, I wanted to get Nico to put up a post, maybe get a poll. It feels like a no-brainer to me, but I wanna hear what you guys have to say. I think a lot of the, you know, concerns on matchmaker and elo system are maybe just a little misunderstood and with some of this more information, you can realize that the elo system's working, but it's having to deal with other hardline options that we gave the players that causes it to have to discard the good match that it found. Okay, that's it, that was a long one, sorry.
No worries at all, thank you for taking the time. The next question is from RusticatedCharm. This is kind of a multi-part question, it all has to do with the balance of Clan and Intersphere. But he says, "What is the timeline on future Clan versus IS balancing? When are Clan mechs going to be comparably as strong as their IS counterparts?" Not sure if he meant that to be the other way around or not, but, and then will Clan balance issues, will Clan balance issues be resolved by the time Community Warfare is released? And when will the full pass of IS quirks be complete? Like I said, multi-part, but if you have-
Yeah, well, the gist is, yes, I wanna have it, of course, buttoned down before Community Warfare is released. I want to stand by my notion that our goal is to not continually nerf the Clan mechs. I think we found a place that's, you know, players are not gonna agree, I mean, sure, they want their mechs to just be absolutely insanely sickly powerful. But right now, they're still very, very powerful and they still fully fulfill that Clan feeling that we described they'd have. And there's, right now, they're still. I'd like to do a test sometime soon this week, maybe do one of those Ninja IS versus Clan things, see what the win percentage looks like and just see what impact's been made. But essentially, I want to try very hard now to leave the Clan weapons where they are, or, let me, let me back that up. What I mean by that is not making significant nerfs to the weapons any further. Doesn't mean we won't at some point say, "Oh, that particular weapon really should be a quarter-second less burn timer," or do, the minor changes that we do in an ongoing basis all the time in our game. But generally speaking, keep the weapons as they are at the Clan mechs, if at all possible, and to look to those other aspects to bridge the gap. So timing-wise, you're looking at, the quirk system is we had to add some more quirks to our coding. We're trying to get it so that, you've seen the quirks we have in the game now, but we had to add weapon-specific quirks, so we could actually say specifically, not just energy weapon cooldown's better, but PPC weapon cooldown is greater, cause that's gonna give us a lot more flexibility, so we can go to a particular awesome, let's say that's known for PPCs and deal with the PPCs specifically for that mech. So we had to develop some new quirks and add those to the codebase. I'm hoping, really, the timing will be around the same time as Community Warfare, so. There's a left torso, right torso thing, same thing. We're gonna look at something there, we're gonna be really careful with it. I think depending on the calculations we do on just how many heat seeks on average Clan mechs are losing when they lose a torso, that might be enough on the heat penalty side, right there. So we'll probably be, we'll be analyzing that very carefully, but it might be more just around the speed side of losing the torso. So I'm sorry that I'm not getting more exact, but basically the timing is the same on everything. It's like literally, this is all gonna be happening inside of the next two months on an ongoing basis until we get there. And that's the best answer I have right now for you. I got the September 23rd patch is pretty much locked down at this point, so definitely not looking at anything until at least the first patch in October for any more of these items being shipped off the list.
Alright, next up we have, and this is referring to Community Warfare, this is by MrWizard, says, "Will you be revealing any concept of Community Warfare to the community prior to its final release?" And I guess that's for feedback from the community.
Yeah, I think I just thought of something else too, I wanted to bring up, around the Clan balancing items. I know a lot of times Paul gets a lot of heat on these things and a lot of times he gets the great privilege of posting and implementing some changes to the weapons, no matter how those changes became, came about or were decided upon. This, I want everyone to know that this particular, this last round of weapon changes, Paul was very busy and I knew we had more ground to cover. The heat efficiency of the Clan mechs was the biggest thing causing them to dominate matches. The last, I want everyone to know that the very latest round of Clan weapon changes were my changes. I went through and I made all the changes myself. I then, you know, discussed them with Paul and the various players and then implemented them. So I just want you to know, I'm taking full responsibility for that, I'm owning that. You guys need to leave the pressure off of Paul. And essentially, I'm kind of a, Paul's got a lot of work to do with Community Warfare. I'm pushing him and leaning on him really hard to make sure that stuff gets done. I'm taking basically ownership of this Clan Intersphere balance issue. I'm gonna be pushing on those items myself, taking a personal hand on those and a personal approach on those and trying to get all them done and get this thing settled in. So I know, not everyone likes the changes, I understand, but we are headed towards a game that even Catalyst Game Labs and Randall Bills would tell you probably should have been like that from the get-go and tabletop or anything. Not, a lot of people like the lore aspect, they like the canon aspect, the whole 10v12 thing stuff, I understand, I get it, I really do. I'm not saying no to that indefinitely, but it can't be a part of our balancing in Phase 1. We're trying to make a game that's for people who wanna run tournaments in esports and, I'm sorry guys, no matter what you tell me, I've seen the good players in this game, the very best players. Why do you think the term meta is so common? They will gravitate towards the very best mechs that put out the very best damage. So it doesn't even matter if it's 12 versus 10, if the Timber Wolf or various mechs are deemed to be the best mechs, they will gravitate towards those mechs. And then we're telling our players, "Hey, you're right, your IS mech is not as good, but if we put lots of them together, you could win." I know we have plenty of players out there that like that notion. They're okay with that, they would play that. But we also have just as many, if not more, and all of our best players that don't think that way and will gravitate towards the Clan mechs. So it's critical that Community Warfare have a chance at the beginning to be truly balanced, or truly balanced between Intersphere and Clans, and so that we can have a truly competitive game that can settle in and allow it to succeed. We need to have even numbers per side or roughly even number of players per side. And we can't count on that happening with a technology group that's, you know, officially presented as being more powerful by pro game. So I know there's many of you out there that agree and understand and see it our way, and I appreciate the support you've given us. Those that don't see it that way, that still wanna see canon and lore above all else, I'm just asking for your patience, I'm asking for you to stay with us for, you know, a few months. Let's get Community Warfare out, let's try and get this thing balanced, let's let the planetary conquest begin, and I promise I'll take up that conversation with you again. So, I went all over the place again, big subject, as you know. So I went all over the place again. Big subject, as you know, we could talk all night about that one.
All right. Back on topic, uh, the question again, this is from Mr. Wizard says, will you reveal, uh, will you be revealing the concept of community warfare to the community prior to its release for feedback?
Yes, absolutely. Um, I'm going to throw Paul on the spot here now big time. Um, I gotta get a post up. And I think Paul, here it comes. You ready for it? Trademark soon. I mean, in the next week or so, I want to get a detailed post up like he did with unit creation. Uh, with the Q and A and stuff. So you guys can see how that works. I'm going to give you the brief rundown right now, but I'll try to be truly be brief. We do get a lot of players asking about, look, I like playing with my friends. I like playing in groups. I like playing with mixed technologies. I like playing my phoenix mechs and my, you know, all my mechs, but, and they want to be able to do that still. But we also know that that doesn't really fit in with truly community warfare, you know? Mixing technologies, phoenix mechs, fighting with, you know, timber wolves on clan jade falcon. It ruins the mood. So we feel like we've come up with a solution that's very good, very elegant, very interesting. And the simple aspect is that you will be from a public queue standpoint, that aspect of mech or nine will still exist. You'll still be able to play with your friends, play mixed technologies, play mixed units, groups, have fun, go there, grind your C bills out, um, you know, get your kills, get done with some of your challenges of the weekend and stuff. But here's the key. And this is, I know very exciting. Faction tab, that's really it. That's where it exists. Clicking on that really is a statement that you are entering a hardcore role playing mode. And you're going to be, you know, participating in unit faction warfare. And again, a hardcore role playing type of way. So outside of that, it can be pretty similar to the way it is today. Have that freedom, but inside that faction tab, it is hardcore role playing time. It's time for you and your unit to get together and defend or attack planets bid on contracts for defending, et cetera, et cetera. And that's where there's going to be more rules in place. Of course, it's like, look, what's, it's going to be very elegant though. You're essentially going to be filtered to the mechs of that battle. So if you click on this planet and it is, you know, intersphere planet being attacked by clans, then of course you're an intersphere player. Then when you, your, your select mech screen, essentially you can think of it as or some UI representation of that will be filtered to those intersphere mechs only that fit that scenario for you to, you know, defend that planet against the clan mechs. And so from that point, from that point inside that faction tab, that's where you really get restricted and you participate in this hardcore role playing mode. So that's it in a nutshell. So that's going to be really great. And within there you go to the map, select on the planets, decide whether to attack or defend, get together as a unit, attack or defend, meet the criteria of the battle with your, you know, filtered mechs based on your faction, et cetera. And that's obviously a very simplified version of it, but that is it. That's going to be, that's what we're working on right now. And we can't wait to give it to you. So we've got all that design. We've got that tech reviewed, almost all of it. Uh, so that's why Paul, again, it's on you, buddy. Um, let's get that post up and let everyone give us some feedback on that.
Excellent. The next question is from effigy. He says, right now, many of our players or your players have both intersphere and clan mechs and probably enjoy playing both types. Um, how will community warfare impact player ability to play mechs from both factions?
Well, I think I just answered that, but let me focus in on that subject. And I think we found the best of both worlds here. As you can tell, we spent a lot of time, uh, trying to find ways to meet the, you know, the requirements for our player base and an, you know, an interesting solution that kind of gives everybody what they want. So my answer to you again is, will you be able to play all your mechs? Yes. In public queue, go nuts, be with your friends, do what you want to do. But I think all of our players can appreciate this, especially there's many thousands out there kind of screaming like, wait a second. And, and that's where we say, that's the faction tab. That's it. That's hardcore role playing mode. So no, you know, in there, it's not mixed technology. It is you and your unit with, for instance, if you're clans that you're playing your clan mechs for those battles, because it is when that battle happens, again, that's for real. That's for the marbles. That's a real match. That's hardcore role playing. You're going to be in your clan mech, fighting intersphere mechs. Hope everyone likes it because, um, that's a, that's a tough, tough problem, but I, no, I, I think the vast, I know people like flexibility and that's why we're trying to give you that in the public queue, but no, we really feel strongly that faction tab is, is hardcore role playing mode. And that's where we, that's where we filter the technology to what your, your faction is.
Okay. I like that answer. Um, Aiden MW brings up a good point, and this actually ties into this whole entire subject is, you know, you're basically saying if you're IS, you use IS mechs, your clan, you're using clan mechs and faction warfare. But let's talk about lore here. Um, and this question, he says, will IS units be able to acquire clan tech salvage or black market? And when you talk about the battle tech lore, this is where this question comes from, is the fact of there is salvage, uh, you know, and, uh, is that ever going to be a part to where sometimes, you know, an IS unit is going to be able to field a mech or mechs that are clan tech?
Well, I mean, I think the answer is almost certainly a resounding yes, but I think you know what the next thing I'm going to say. Not right away. Um, not right away for a few reasons. One, of course, time to implement that, but also time to experience all aspects. I think I've really, we finally get this community warfare module out. I want to cherish it. I mean, let's cherish it and let's, in the beginning, let's really make it play out that scenario of, you know, clan versus IS and IS is running with their own gear. Um, and I think you can expect it to play out in like that for at least a season, Eric Wills. I don't know how long the season is. And at some point in our timeline, I'm sure of course we'll be introducing more and more clan technology as the game progresses, you know, into intersphere side and all those things will happen, um, as we, as we expect them to, but not in the beginning. And that just kind of reminds me that keep in mind, all you faction players, like being intersphere faction players kind of craving for your, you know, house Steiner versus, you know, whoever Kira conflicts. Um, we think our solution on the faction tab is really elegant. It's going to be able to provide the ability for us to do that. So by example, let's say for one weekend, a weekend event in community warfare, we say, okay, we're now going to have the battle of such and such well-known planet in house. I just think I just said Steiner Kira, but you know, I don't know. I'm not looking at my maps. I'm probably going to say something dumb, but you know, Laos, uh, and a Steiner conflict. And it's in the canon and lore. And in this battle, it happened on this planet and these were the mechs that played major roles in that battle. So now we have the building this weekend to make that particular planet kind of flash as a little team being contested. And it allows our, you know, Steiner and Laos players in this circumstance to go there as their, those factions. And the mechs will then be filtered to the ones available for their side, based on the faction and the canon, et cetera, and the lore. And they can have that, we can play out some of those, you know, uh, battles between inner sphere houses. Um, so I just, I thought of that when you brought that up, um, for whatever reason, I wanted to bring that up because I know there's a lot of our players, intersphere players that'd be excited about that concept. So this solution inside this faction tab is, is not just going to allow us to play out the, you know, intersphere and fading the clans, but also be able to play out some, some house combat. And, uh, one of those things that we're still trying to decide on internally is just how long is, um, a season, you know, how long is the, how much changed and how quickly does it happen to the map? And does it happen more quickly to the end of a season and a resetting or more of a, we're starting to lean towards that notion because we think, you know, the length of the timeline and how slow the timeline moves in real time, then that, um, at least at this point, and we've already seen that the timeline is not going to determine us. If we have to change the timeline to suit our development needs, we can do that. But I think it might, it might be very possible that for the, to make it interesting and to watch the map change much more significantly in real time with our players, it might change, you know, much more quickly than perhaps lore says it does to a point, and then we possibly reset it. But take that just as a thought. Um, our thinking in the past has always been more about just following the timeline, but we're starting to wonder if that would be interesting enough for our players. So obviously you guys can start thinking about that and, um, you know, how much of a, uh, how much we changed that map and how closely we follow our timeline when it comes to, you know, uh, the battle and, and how much the map changes and how often we set it, et cetera. That's, that's one of the few remaining kind of questions we have that we just don't quite have an answer for yet. But as you can see, it's, um, it's not something that really would hold up development. It's really just, um, we've got time here to sort of make up our mind and, and, uh, and, and it probably is determined based on the playership, you know, if the, the players love community warfare and a significant number of players come into play. Then it probably means the more and more planets we can turn on to be contested, which probably determines how we do affect the map. So it might be one of those things that really gets determined by, uh, you know, the success and the popularity of the feature.
Excellent. Now Russ, this has already been over three hours. Want to totally thank you for your time. Uh, do you have time for a couple more? Or we got about 700 people in there still. What do you want to do?
Let's, um, let's pick, uh, pick a couple of your best questions. Let's take a couple more and see where we're at.
All right. Um, let's see, we are getting down. We've pretty much gone through this list. So I'm trying to find something that's, that hasn't been discussed, uh, real quick. You can answer this really quickly if you want to, virtually dark ass. I, um, feel the need to ask this. Will there, we, will we ever see a Solaris type game mode in MWO?
Well, there's a really good question. Um, you know, obviously we've got the private match window. And so in the meantime, um, we can, we have to kind of rely on our community, um, to recreate that environment. They have the full capability of, of, you know, making uh, that play out, you know, and having set up, setting up their own tournaments and environment. So for now, I think we have to leave it at that. Um, if we bring anything in more officially, it's obviously again, going to be your same answer, um, after community warfare. You know, that's a 2015 type thing. So if there's some community run Solaris type tournaments that are very successful here in the next, let's call it the next, you know, three to six months, um, then who knows? Yeah. Maybe after that we can look to, uh, kind of more officially incorporating something like that. Uh, again, same answer, but, um, there you go.
All right. We've had a question from, uh, Solomon. He asks, uh, question is artificial intelligence like the grunts from Titanfall? A possibility for future ambibo objective play?
Well, there you go. That's again, as I answered earlier, that's a first of the new year, community warfare is out. We start thinking about what's our next big thing, um, beyond just improving the initial four pillars. Is it PVE? Is it single player, et cetera? So, I mean, yeah, I gotta believe that it's, it's going to happen. It just, it's going to have to be prioritized in the features that the players want. And if they want that straight away after community warfare, then, um, you know, we'll go there.
All right. Um, another quick one here. This is from Zayz. He says, uh, and this might've been a repeat. I don't know if, I don't think we've addressed this. I've noticed from my limited experience that the group queue seemed to have an issue with large pre-made groups crushing clusters of small groups. On the opposite side, any plans to essentially balancing the, the group queue? Uh, is that an issue and is it going to be dealt with?
You know, I think I answered that one. I'm going to reiterate that, guys, how do you feel about when you change the game mode selector to a voting system rather than a hard lock? Cause I think you will find that the matchmaker will do a much better job at finding competitive games. Now 12 mans are a very special case, as you know, um, even larger groups of six, eight, whatever. They can be paired up with fours and other sixes, and the matchmaker would do a really good job of that. 12 mans themselves, even still, that will help that as well. So now if you've got two, even two, three, four, five, six, 12 mans out there in the queue, um, the matchmaker can put them together if they're good match for each other. Doesn't have to worry about whether one of them selected, um, you know, the, you know, some game mode that the other one said they didn't want to play or something. So I think that's our initial step. I feel, I hope the players would allow that change because I think, um, you know, that would, that would be the first thing we could do to improve the performance of the group queue, flat out right there for sure. I'd like to get that change in and I'd like to see how much it improves the group queue. Um, and, uh, you know, kind of take it from there. It's just, sometimes it's the way we approach things. It's like one step at a time. You know, here I've identified kind of the, the most pressing thing that I think can make the most impact really quickly. And it's a small item. Let's get that change in and let's see where we stand.
All right. Next question, and this is actually, um, we've had multiple people, but VoIP, uh, voiceover IP. Uh, this is a request that has been going on and on. You guys sort of did it with, um, that C3 and then it sort of dropped. Um, obviously we've talked about this, uh, is this something coming? Is it planned? Can be planned? And a lot of people want it.
Yeah. Um, apparently there's, there's a VoIP solution built into Crytek that the guys uncovered and they dusted it off and we got Brian Buckton on a little while ago and he got sidetracked by the many features of, you know, unit creation and, and stuff. So that's just one of those things that's just sitting there and it's just like, we want it. And my plan would be, it's, it's simple. I mean, the C3, 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 whatever it's called, forget, doesn't even work or maybe it works. I don't know. It doesn't get used. So we need to do a solution like Rogue Tanks has, where essentially it's a built-in VoIP solution. And you guys can all run your team speak servers. That's great. Do whatever you want to do. But for those of everyone else, um, new players in particular, and that is the big question. It's just like, how many of the people actually listening here want to use the built-in VoIP or they all just assuming that it's the best thing we can do for new players? Cause those are two very different things, right? But the ultimate solution of course is that it's just built in like Rogue Tanks has, where essentially you just, you're just, you just go out, you just go in the match and you're going to just press a button to talk to your team. And you're just going to press a different button to talk to your lance. And there you go. Right? Um, I don't, we wouldn't have an old chat. I imagine that would be silly. People would just swear at each other. But basically, um, yeah, that's what we want to do. That's our path. I just don't have, uh, a path to completion at this point, because there's not, you know, those guys are working on, guess what? Community warfare. That's right. So there you go. So, um, I guess I, I'm kind of curious to that question though. How many of you guys listening to this would really go away from your own team speak server with your buddies and actually use the built-in one?
Well, obviously I, I don't think a whole lot would. It's just the fact of it's an option for people to use if they need it and when they need it. But if you're using TS, you're not going to move, but I
Right. So basically it's like, I think they did it in Rogue Tanks a lot where you and your boys are in team speak and you're, you're there. But when you get in a match and you and your boys talk to each other, but then you've got the six pugs too. So you quickly hit the end game, team chat button, say, hey, pugs, what's up? We're going right.
Yep.
You know, and so you, yeah, you, you steer them a bit. I get it.
That with command wheel. Yeah. I think, uh, uh, I do have one, uh, comment question and then Darren's going to be getting the last one. Um, this is actually, hold on, let me, let me find it. I actually thought this was a good, uh, question. It keeps getting scrolled up. Basically chaos. Made a comment just a second ago that, uh, he said, you guys are about to reward the clan, uh, packs, right? The, you know, the, the top tier, the mascari. And then he said, if they get the, this new pack, they're going to get rewarded with a specialty mech, which that you won't name. Um, would you consider actually rewarding founders as well if they get one of these with a IS mech? Dropping that one.
Um, yeah, I'm not going to, I guess, commit to something right now, but, uh, well, okay. I will say that the, the program does also have the other loyalty tiers, meaning if you, I think we have a founders loyalty. So if you have a founders and one of the clan wave two, you get something. If you have, um, a phoenix and clan wave two, you get something. If you have clan wave one and this one, you get something. And then there's just like, hey, if you really went cloud clan wave one, if you get something huge. So there are those reward tiers, but I'll admit they're tiny right now. Those other ones, there's the one huge one. The other one, the other rewards, loyalty rewards are, are smallish, kind of like the past programs. So, um, that's a tough question because, um, founders are great. Founders are right there from the beginning. Um, but we'd get the same question, I suppose, from the Phoenix people and say, what about us? So if we had a Phoenix one.
You know, it's a valid question.
Um, it is a valid question. Um, I guess our thinking was, as you can man, imagine, and it makes sense. It's really about, um, it's about our clan players. It's about building up our clan mechs, the clan user base and our clan players. And saying, you know, those that are really supporting basically the clan launch with clan wave one and clan wave two are, thank you so much. Here you go. Um, so as to, um, the other previous programs, intersphere programs and mixing that in with the, uh, the clan program, I, I just don't have that answer right now. So.
You can't build upon, you know, a foundation without having the foundation. You can't build upon, you know, a foundation without having the foundation, some would could argue. Just saying. I'm totally for, you know, helping out the founders as well. So, yeah.
All right, actually I, there's two final questions. One is thrown out in chat a lot in the last few minutes, so I want to make sure it is discussed and we'll have a quick, easy closer. Which the, the big one is, I think, essentially, and this has come from several people, so I'm sorry if I'm not naming you. Can we activate premium time in chunks? A lot of people sitting on a ton of premium time and they want to know, number one, if they can activate it in chunks? Or number two, if in the future, they can be purchased in smaller chunks or whatever?
All right. So I do have something to add there. Thank you for asking. This is on Niko. Niko, if you're listening, I'm throwing you under the bus now, buddy. I know you've been busy, same with John, our web engineer with all the data center switch and stuff. Okay, it is a sensitive subject because essentially we're the only game that basically even allows bank time. You know, it's, we gave that to the founders, so don't, hey, founders, remember we, we do stuff for you. You made up a very valid point, like, look, we really shouldn't be burning our premium time quite yet. And when we first, you know, started, and so we, we created the notion of banked time. And so the extra value of what MWO gives players that other games don't is when you get the premium time with a package purchase, it's banked time. So now we have guys sitting on loads of banked time. So by the way, that brings up an interesting question. A lot of people talk about grinding C-bills, but obviously our game gives out quite a few C-bills. If our players don't feel very much pressure to turn on those premium accounts. So I'm just saying, just throwing that out there. I think we're relatively generous in our C-bill thing, so please don't tell us that we nursed it when we went 12v12, we need to give out more. I think we give out a lot. So I'm just saying there. So fight me, I guess. Come at me or whatever the word is. There you have that, but then we have this notion of banked time. Now we've got people sitting on a lot of banked time and I understand, they hit the activate button, they're activating like tons, right? How much do you, some of you guys have, like nine months of premium time, like banked time sitting there? And you don't want to activate at all. So here, here's what we have then. I am not going to get into nickel and diming this, so meaning this is not going to turn into, after this, we give you this, 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 until the point where you're activated in like an hour of premium time at a time. What I will do though, and it's already done, all we gotta do is get our boy Niko to put up an announcement for you guys and John to flip the switch on the website. So this is not something you'll be able to do in the game client right away. We could look into adding that in the future. But going into website, going under profile, somewhere in there, you're going to have the ability to activate your banked premium time in chunks of one month. So I'm willing to go that far and say, okay, we're going to give you guys an option. And basically, like I said, this is done. We just need to turn it on. And so this is something that we've been working on for the last few weeks here, since we took over MechWarrior as a change in policy and one of those representations of change in policies that we're willing to do. And we're going to allow you guys to activate that banked time in chunks of one month. So there you go. You're going to have to make the one month commitment now on the banked time. So tell me, tell me that's awesome.
That is awesome. I know a lot of people are going to be happy about that. So thanks for answering. So I just want to let everybody know again, we've repeated a few times, but let you know again, this is going to be available post-broadcast, which will be ending in a few short minutes. It'll be highlighted here on Twitch. It'll be uploaded to YouTube and it will also be uploaded as a podcast. So I want to give a very big thank you to Russ for showing up tonight, for spending well, well, almost three and a half hours now in this town hall meeting. Want to thank also everybody in the background that has been helping out, a lot of NGNG staff and PGI, thank you guys. Couldn't have done it without any of you. But this kind of goes into the next question, which is there, there were a few questions that didn't, we didn't get to. But for the most part, we actually covered the, the large chunk of them. So I'm pretty happy about that. But the final question is, can we do more town hall meetings? Whether that's once a quarter, once a month, something like that? A few people were asking throughout the broadcast.
Yeah, absolutely. This is something like I would want to do for a while. I think it's worked out really well here. I want to thank everyone for coming. That's everyone, you know, super friends of the show and those that are more adversarial. I think everyone here tonight showed a lot of class and responsibility and I wasn't sitting there monitoring the chat. But I think we got a lot of great questions and I think we answered questions from all types of players and community members. And I would like to do this again and you're right, monthly would probably be too frequently, although I think it would say, no, it's not. But let's figure that out. You know, we can, I think quarterly is kind of the, the easy answer, it's kind of like the obvious answer. But, you know, let's, let's, let's figure that out and see, maybe it's, maybe it's more frequently that, maybe quarterly is perfect. So. Yes, let's do it again.
Make it so. And of course, I'd like to say thank you to everyone who joined us today. Hopefully you guys enjoyed this town hall meeting with Russ. Again, it's always a pleasure sitting down. And I want to give shout-outs to a few people behind the scenes because they are, they've been doing a lot of stuff. Let's see, we got Deadfire, Wingbreaker, Catrakill, you guys know him, Niko, and of course BB Wolf and Kiri and Meister, Edmund. All of those guys for helping out. Yeah, Oddwalla behind the scenes. We got a bunch of people that have helped getting this document full of answers and questions, or questions and then plus moderation. And of course, you guys, you guys are awesome. Thank you for being civil. And of course, for those that weren't, hey, appreciate you guys just coming out here. You do care. And that's what we're going to take out of this. And of course, yeah, we will be back tomorrow for some normal mech porn action. I will be streaming, I think, tonight because I have a little bit of the lance challenge left to do. But Russ, it's been a pleasure. Thank you for showing up and doing this pretty much in AMA, a live AMA, which I think is pretty cool. Text form sucks. I'm not going to lie. Tech sucks. So anyways, yeah, thank you. And of course, guys, you heard him, we're going to be looking at possibly doing another one, maybe in a few months to give you guys an update and expect obviously more information to come on Community Warfare. You heard and specifically from Paul and Niko as well. You've got some posts coming from them dealing with a few things. So guys, this will be put on YouTube. We will create a highlight as well. And so if you missed this, missed earlier on in questions, and if you didn't have any questions answered or you missed something or something like that, we will do our best to get them answered, maybe in a podcast and/or a future AMA as well. So anyways, guys, thank you. Have a great night. Be safe. Don't do anything I wouldn't do and we'll see you tomorrow. Until next time, MechWarriors.
Night, everyone.